Clerk.
We are ready.
We're good to go. Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, May fifth, Rob Epstein's birthday. Happy birthday. Severn fell city council special meeting and I will request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bushing.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Curtis is absent. Councilmember Maria Scalotti.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. There are four of us here for the next hour. We will have our second study session on the city council goals and objectives. There's a lot to cover in sixty minutes, but we've already spent several hours on this. So it's really a continuation of that conversation. So I will turn it over to A C. I'm.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Kate from Lambeth City Council. So the goal of today's meeting likes to present the updated near final draft of our goals and objectives. This is really a chance for the council to review the changes since the last study session as well as provide any last feedback. This is kind of like our last stop before this document comes for the city council for adoption at the May nineteenth meeting. So so tonight we have a handout as well as the goals and objectives themselves. And this handout, we're calling kind of like our feedback integration summary, really is here to help guide the discussion this evening. It's a crosswalk of sorts of the feedback that you all provided at that first study session, as well as some of the feedback that our director team and manager team have also provided on this. So it's amalgamation of all that. Trying to make it concise, so we can see how the document has evolved since February. And I will also call out that on page six is a summary of each of your top citywide priorities. This was as we went through that session with Jacob Green, we had asked each of you what your priorities are for citywide goals and objectives. And so that page six, seven, eight, how they bear. So you have that for your ones. And Mayor Kate, she said we have sixty minutes, seven priority areas. And so we have eight minutes each. And as we go through, we'll walk through this handout and give a quick overview of the major changes which we've also highlighted. Which we've also highlighted on the draft goals and objectives documents. So you can see that easy as well. And then we'll have time for the four of you to discuss, provide any last kind of feedback, which we will incorporate. And then Sean and the digital team will work their magic and turn it into a really nice looking public facing document for you all to consider in two weeks. So with that, we'll dive right in. There's no questions.
No questions.
So the first thing you'll notice is we reordered the priority areas. That's just again, some feedback that we got trying to make them flow a little more systematically. But specifically as it relates to the priority area changes, you know, we've made some changes to the wording. So it's now economic development and neighborhood vitality. That was simply Doug Comcast over Bushy as well as including words like belonging for equity priority area as well as adding efficient to high performance show. So those are just some of the the priority area changes. And then diving into priority area A, which is a pretty sizable section. In addition to making the change to the title, we've added a number of new goals and objectives here. I think the first here is A one point three, which relates to promoting tourism, special events and optimizing citywide assets by leveraging targeted marketing initiatives. And so that was something that staff following up wanted to make sure we captured that element of economic development strategic plan that C E D is doing in that space. In addition, Vice Mayor Bushy had asked for more focus on bringing in sales tax generating uses or having objectives or goals on that. And you will see as we go through this, that there is actually a new habit objective, but it falls under high performance governance relates to financial sustainability strategies to that. And then we have added a couple other objectives here. The first is relating to transforming city gateways to public spaces. So there is now an oak here. Because this is feedback that I know we've heard from several of you. So this incorporates that as a goal and then also priorities that are related to that. And then there's feedback around nuisance businesses, which that also is under high performance government. We'll get to that later. And so with that, those are the main updates for priority area A, but I want to pause and see if there's any comments, additional feedback or any any things you would like to discuss.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any additional comments or questions on this section?
Well, um, yes, although it goes to all of them. On the little note at the top that says goals are wrote in ranked priority order on. Why aren't they? Where is the priority? Um, are they all equal? Is that what you're trying to say? Do we want to say that? I don't think so.
Yeah.
Um. So how do we, what does the order say if it says anything? I think it should say something. Um, so, and I like that this is first. So I think this should be our highest priority.
Yeah, I mean, so as we gone through, this is our first goal. It's that's standing up this kind of strategically goals and objective structure for the organization. And what we have been able to do is while these are kind of equivalents as it relates to the way that they're displayed in this plan, there are columns here that are added that state the year that they're going to begin, whether they're ongoing or they're new as well as who the lead and supporting departments are. So there is a level prioritization there as it relates to when these things are going to be starting and what staff are going to be working on them. And that's a function too that will come out as we do second phase of this work, which is the the priority area work planning where we're actually assigning staffing resources to do the things that we're saying in this plan. There are post probably like seventy or eighty objectives. And so it gets to a place of, you know, how do you rank that like? And go, it can go any, any different day, but.
Yeah. Do you mind if I just do a quick add on to that? I think we haven't really talked deeply about what that work plan associated with each one of these priority areas is going to look like. But no, your question about where are the priorities from a timing standpoint? It's what that fiscal year twenty five, twenty six work plan that's going to support this. That's coming to council later in the summer or early fall. And that's where you're really going to see again, like the alignment of budget resources, staff, the capacity, and that will elevate what out of these can be accomplished in that first fiscal year.
Yes, that's part of it, the timing. But then there's just much of what we do is bouncing competing issue, competing priorities. And to some extent, I think it would be helpful to have us articulate which of these we see, you know, how we see these in in order, but at a conservative conceptual strategic level, not down at the tactical level. What are we going to actually do?
Yeah, maybe it's a, it's a function of this level of goals. The council wants to give us feedback in the session that says, you know, A two is, I think, you know, the most important goal on this first page. And then we can think about how do we reflect that when we bring it back to the council.
I'm at even a higher level than that. At the, at the A, the the five different things. I said five different things. How do we see them stacking up? Um, in, in, as it goes to, but that's my points.
Excellent comment because there is more than three years of work right here. And what you're getting at is how we, when we have that conversation around prioritization and trade off. And I think part of that was what I've also heard is when we're doing the budget process and the work plan, because all the incredible staff in there but sense of their capacity, their funding and everything else. And that's where the one to two to three. And I appreciate the city manager inviting us to say which is a priority of each of these, reminding all of you that we've already given our priorities in the previous ones. We can't just have ten more priorities. It's that trade off part that you're talking about. So if there is one on here, do mention it, but I don't want to spend too much time trying to reprioritize these. I think I'd rather have us get to the whole document and to make sure the document encapsulates everything that we have. But I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I mean, so I somewhat of a contrasting view, which is, so I agree that it would be great to be able to give staff very explicit direction on it. But I also understand too that I'm going to make up a scenario that there are certain of these that have you know, say strict timeline to expand the fund by a certain date. And so there's going to be hard things we can't move even that's not at the top. So I guess my sense is that once the process here, well, I'll certain you can tell me if it's wrong. Christine, which is, you know, once the work plan has been laid out, if there are, hey, this could get jeopardized, or this is below the line, that would be the first point for us to react to it. Might that be the way for us to express our priorities?
Yeah, absolutely. That I think process wise, you're spot on. I think the the question about how to prioritize each of the priority areas is really difficult. You said, are they all equal? Well, it's, it depends. Like is housing more important than I mean, there, there is this inner relationship, high functioning government is the foundation to make sure we can deliver on all of these things. So I think it could, we could spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to order those. But we'll, we'll think about that some more.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, did you have any questions on this in addition?
I, as it relates to just priority area A, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so I have two questions. One is I'm just looking at the A two, three with the citywide illegal dumping program. And right now, so, so it was a little bit also for me, the priorities is year one to three. But I know there's some state law that we have to follow. So I guess we will be adjusting that.
This is another part of the state law on this.
Oh, different from this one, A two, three?
Yeah. Oh, are you talking about S B two seventy two?
There's thirteen.
There's thirteen. That's very sorry.
The sustainability.
Yeah.
Specifically just to the legal dumping program that's a fun for the M S S rates and have just hired a waste management coordinator. Of the mess.
Okay, so for me, that one, I don't know. Are we talking about priorities? Because I think to me that will be one of the top priorities, especially as we are going to have somebody looking into that. And it's a huge issue. In, you know, in the canal. So I mean, many neighborhoods. So so that's one of the comments. The other one very quickly is that I know that we have now the new B three to the assets and traxity assets to asset management. This is the green spaces and the tree inventory. So I know that is on two. I believe that that's the one, right?
Right.
When we are talking about assets. And I don't know if it makes more sense under A two. But I'm happy to leave it on the next one. Just wanted to clarify that. The new B three two, that's what we are talking about. So that's all. And we have a B, so.
Thank you. I have one question and one comment. So my question, and I might have been, I didn't have the previous, I don't have the original draft. So A three four, develop a Northgate specific plan. And when we refer often refer to Northgate, we refer to the Northgate project, and it has its own specific plan that we actually, it's a developer. So could you either clarify or expand what this is? It stuck out in the turn of the week.
Hello, afternoon. Specific plan is really related to a grant we're proceeding with G C A bag. But it's actually the same grant cycle as the San Antonio Pacific plan. But this is really specific to the P D A of Northgate. So it's not just Northgate product by itself, but the outstanding other pieces that tie into the P D A and surrounding work.
So could it be possible that said the North San Rafael priority development area plan? Okay, thank you. So my one question. And then in terms of the priority for this one, which it's happy to see was consistent with what I said last time was all really A two. So our gateways and public spaces, I want Seraphel to look as loved as we all love it. And I think right now it's looking a little tired. So I continue to have that as. Any other questions, staff, with any other clarifications on this item? Yeah, go ahead.
Clarification, as we are talking, I agree with your goal.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I know it's going into the needy greedy because it's more like, we talk about like volunteer coordinator. I know it's not possible right now, but maybe being able to find somebody that can help the city to achieve some of these goals by with partnerships. And I don't know, it would be possible maybe to consider like a stipend. Again, this is kind of like more like into the details of how we are going to achieve that. But I think maybe it's important to, we used to have a volunteer coordinator that was made very, made possible to have different organizations, different volunteers to help out with many of these projects. So.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the mobility infrastructure. So a couple of the things we've added here, feedback from Mayor Kate. Master of citizens plan from high form, definitely move that now over into this priority area and be three point one. And then there was discussions around partnerships, but also funding mechanisms. And that has been captured in three, so high performance government. It's that one here later. And then there was requests to continue on with the residential pumping program objective. That's in current goals and objectives. And so we've now brought that over and B one point five. And then we've also made a couple revisions to what Councilmember Michael was just talking about, B three, two with the asset management program. And then lastly, staff and April and her team were able to clarify and add a little more context for B four, two around the citywide strong drain plan, particularly talking about identifying tracking system condition deferred maintenance and new system improvements as well as city standards for that type of infrastructure, maintenance schedules, looking at sea level rise impacts to that as well. So we'll pause there for area B.
Okay, Vice Mayor, additional questions or comments that are your? One, Councilmember Hill?
Uh, yeah, this is more to underscore the unfunded nature of our work. So on B one six, what says execute a comprehensive pay payment management program? Is that, I'm looking at April, is that more wishful that part of that would have to involve some degree of grant because there really isn't enough funding for us to keep ahead of the index? Just want to understand how it execute.
I think it's to protect the money we're using towards the pavement management program, although we don't have enough money to maintain our pavement condition index. Does not touching what we're currently doing and potentially even prioritizing money with, you know, to go more money to go into it. There's any more of a protection like that is a priority that is goal. Try.
Okay. And fair, I just, this is getting into the nuance of it, but fair is right at like, is it like a seventy five percent?
It's sixty.
Sixty.
Um, yeah, I think. Yeah, I think the average in town might be in the in sixties or I think at like sixty two. The new technology that's that's come out like we're using A I and we're going to assess our roads using that, which could be way more accurate, which may put us at a fifty nine, which would not meet this goal. So we'll find out more in the next year.
Gotcha. Okay. I know it seemed like nitty gritty, but I was curious about what it means to say execute a comprehensive plan. Okay, thank you. That clarifies that. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I'm kind of like going back to again to my next B three, two. And I know that we are talking about like the, the, the tree asset, you know, the inventory or like green spaces, but I either, I don't know that if it, I know that it's under Department of Public Works, but I don't know that it belongs in mobility and infrastructure. Although they are assets, but I feel that they are like more like around sustainability. Trees are like the number one way that you can sequester. You know, carbon and also equity, even A two. You know, so I don't know that is in the right place. And also I would love to see a little bit more description around what it is, you know, more specific that we are talking about trees and green, you know, and not just assets.
That's my. Thank you. No questions on this. Keep going.
I just as a management, as a management program is, yes, trees are part of that, but it's all of our assets. So it's a much bigger program than that. So trees is more important. I think that's why it lives there. There's a lot of, a lot of our infrastructure, but you know, trees. It's a report that about to their more than demonstration.
Okay, so when we are talking about like green spaces, will that be also part of assets or?
Well, our parks are part of assets. So it gets just depends on kind of what.
Okay.
Just, yeah. Not straight answer.
Okay. Good. As long as it's included there, and we know that we are talking about green.
That's one of the assets.
It was right. Okay. So when we are doing the priorities, do we depend on an inventory of all the assets? Or can we just specify? Because I imagine that it will take much longer to do an inventory of all the assets that it will just focus, for example, like tree inventories versus everything.
Yeah, so we, we gathered most of the assets, including trees through doing our LIDAR data last year. And now we're working on with our maintenance team to create a program to help us with maintenance of it, but also doing more analysis. So we're, we're going to have more with the program. We just started. We did the inventory. We got the program, learning the program, and then we'll eventually have, you know, these are our goals towards asset management. And then we'll bring those probably to city council. To that point, on like, what is our strategy to maintain that?
And fund them.
And but that.
So I mean, a big part of it is, yeah. We, we need to know how underfunded we are in order to manage the current existing spaces as well as grow into new spaces. And that's really important kind of baseline information for us to strategize new revenue streams and how we're going to pay for these things as we make enhancements to them. Yeah.
And follow up on this. So the part of that discussion be through the C I P because that is where we get the prioritization. We might look at the assets and there might be a component that is way underfunded. So that's where that trade off is as opposed to trying to do that trade off today. This is much more top line. So will that trade off for that discussion and happen through the C I P process, kind of like in both you and April? For when we start to look at the assets and figure out which are underfunded and.
Yeah, yeah. So it'll be part of, part of them. Yeah, it'll be part of the C I P conversation.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah. A follow on the question on, as with any database, the issue is all about what's going in, what's coming out. And keeping all of this up to date and all of that data in there is a very tedious and time consuming task. And do we have the staff to do that?
Yeah. So this, I mean, this new program, we've been working with digital services, but we have a new asset management program, which has, you know, it's on your phone and it's on your computers. And so we, I mean, this team is working very closely with it. So if they see something that's updated, they can, they can market, make sure that that asset is new or what the current status is. As well as like, will we get permitting if somebody else is doing infrastructure? We could do that. But we were really closely with the digital team to get through or modify infrastructure, make sure.
Very familiar with the concept, actually sell this stuff. But I know that the vulnerability is putting the information in. And it, you know, it's just garbage in, garbage out. If, if you, if you don't have the staff to do it right, it's almost worse than not doing it at all. So I guess the answer I'm hearing is we have to back it to it, right?
And we're, so we're integrating it with secret fix. So the idea is all the assets include street signs, curb curves, like all these things that like people also calling and saying, we need to get this fixed. So the idea is that not only when they're actually replaced entirely, but when a service ticket request comes in, then it's integrating with the system to say, oh, this has been, you know, modified. And so it updates the database. But it allows us to update that database in real time, not with just majors capital improvement projects or kind of paving, but also on the ticketed system that that's happening as requests coming.
So if I were to say, give me print out every stop sign on in San Rafael city limits on its average age and what it would cost to repair the top ten percent. Could you do that?
So the system is supposed to, with through the LIDAR testing, it was identified everything in the public right of way and assigned age and condition for the best of what's available.
Okay, so you could do that.
It, I'm sorry, that has been working more closely on that.
Not for signs, but for a difference for assets, yes.
Well, it's a bigger asset.
Trees, trees, yes, for, for all the trees that were identified by LIDAR, they have the condition and the species and.
We're going to move on. So we're really granular. It's a goals and objectives meeting. So we're, we're trying to keep it high level. Yes, please.
It's one, it's a B four, two, actually have two questions about this is developed comprehensive citywide strong drain plan. Would you set the expectation, April, is that that thing, vision of that, we would be able to say, we know we need fifty million dollars to resolve our drain system? Is that an accurate, not that's cool. Okay. It probably won't be fifty, but I'll ignore. And then my second question is that anywhere we see in year of plan where it has a three plus, does that mean that it's likely to span into the next cycle?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
That's going to be a phased project to that four point two. But yeah, it's, it's going to last.
So I guess that, I mean, maybe this is circling back to the Vice Mayor's question about priority. But sometimes, you know, things by necessity will have to span that many years. So it's not, it's not like an easy card just to play like, oh, we'll just have it span the next one. These, these are, those usually suggest a high level of effort. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. You're not playing easy cards. Okay.
Thank you. Question or?
No, no, I was just thinking as we were talking about the three plus and I see the, again, the asset inventory that is one to three plus. I'm like, is that going to go into the next cycle, you know, so.
Probably. Okay, next later.
Uh, priority area C, I'm just going to go real quick to us for the sake of time. We've made some changes to C two to capture different types of events as well as include uh, greater emphasis on zone zero from outcome recourse. And then I think the big one, the bigger change is here is that we have split previous goals into separate goals. So now we have like a community focused you know, capacity to prepare for and respond to emergencies and natural disasters. And then the staff organizational side of that equation. Having that called out that way as well. So how many answer any questions or comments that you may have?
Vice Mayor, any questions or comments on this item? No, that's my mic.
So when we are talking about C two, two, you know, the zone zero, that's very expensive for homeowners. And I understand is one of the mitigations. And I wonder how much regulation is going to come from the state, from the county before we have to implement it.
It's one of the same thing.
Okay.
We don't want to get ahead of everybody. Go on to the last ones, but we are, we are very aggressively talking to other jurisdictions within the state to see where they're going to wind up at. So, you know, we are concerned also about that. But I think it'll be manageable. Remind you that this was supposed to be implemented in twenty twenty two and here in twenty twenty five, finding out some policies we're about invoking this. So we are very aggressive in pursuing where we're going to wind up with that. So.
Okay, great. I think that's a good question. Would, would, whenever we have very black and white language, it actually funnels us to certain decisions. So I'm wondering if placing a consideration on zone zero, because I hear what the chief's saying, I don't know, or whatever the word is, maybe soften it from emphasis depending on, we don't want to get into the state and maybe the guidance is a little different.
Yeah, I think there's a way we can soften it, soften it and make sure we're in compliance with state regulations. Yeah.
It's a little tactical, but on C four, for research and investment technology, I know that I recently watched the least the PAC did a review of the drone that might be procured to sit on the top of the public safety center. Is that one, but maybe in advance of, of, of what, of what might be coming with C four fours or other things contemplating? Because that's, it's a pretty large expenditure site. I was like, does that check the box or other mechanism is going to be considered?
Yeah, I think there's so many other things that are, that are coming with A I that we're looking at all sorts of things. So I think that that just is an opener. I can't, I can't tell you six months ago that we would have this technology available for us to have a drone on top of the roof and respond to riches before we even do. So I think that just leaves the opener to be able to be a forefront of that research and development and including, you know, opportunities out there for research or anything like that from other private companies, they will partner with them moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions on this item that I've never even asked. I don't have any questions on this, I think, if I've never even asked.
Right, we're gonna move on to priority area D, housing and homelessness, so this one, um we've been able to clarify since role is. To responding to homelessness, uh you'll see in D, we'll obviously collaborate with the county of Marin and other community projects to implement strategies. Homelessness clarified in D one point one around the implementation of a housing focused interim shelter program. Um, and then uh in D one point four, just added here the strategically increasing secure additional funding sources by leveraging key partnerships. Again, this is looking at working with the county, working with the nonprofit providers to go after state grants from the, that's where the money's at for this. So just have it out there. Uh, in addition, uh as we move over to like the housing side of things, there was uh feedback on, you know, wanting to focus more on the development of housing. So we added uh D two one, uh which looks to analyzing state housing laws and case law. Uh streamline policies, remove barriers and support the development of new housing in alignment with legal requirements and community needs. And um. We made a couple of other uh wording changes um throughout, as well as added more detail on the tenant protection. Uh, piece for uh the three one, um and uh also added. Uh, D one point three for evaluating the camping ordinance, that's the legal framework changes, that's just as. Things, the situation around us evolves, we're always looking at and evaluating how the camping ordinance is performing, so.
Thank you, uh Vice Mayor. I want to ask you on this.
I wish there was something about accelerating building, um you know, I, I search here in Maine. For my built baby built, um it's something that enco- encompasses that. Is that where we work with the developers, um and find out what, what is the blocker and how do we remove that blocker? To actually get some construction cranes in the city in my lifetime.
Um, anything else?
Questions on the page, but yeah, Councilmember Hill.
I made a comment last time, and maybe it got captured and put in somewhere that I just can't see, I, I recall saying in the session, something to the effect of. Can we memorialize the notion that we will send uh formal letters as we have in the past, the upper electeds. Around uh cleaning up certain parts of the housing laws that are coming down, I, I remember saying that, but I don't see it here, does that capture it somewhere here?
Um, we actually had a discussion about this um earlier, so I, I'll, if I can take it down.
Please.
That kind of function is something that necessarily isn't a goal and objective, but rather a core function of what we do. And right now, we don't have any analysts in our office to really own and drive the legislative program for the city. I know there have been a number of bill requests, uh letter requests coming in from. House cities and, you know, we're trying to stay on top of that, but that's something that will we hire that position. Um, that will be a core function of their role, helping to, you know, run that legislative program.
Uh, to what you're saying is it's more operational, okay, I will accept that as operating.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I got. Thinking about that and I, oh, there we are, um on D three two. I know it says year of plan one to two, um my feedback will be like, will be amazing if it can be also part of year one. Because I think it's be a little bit of part of D three one. And it's pretty. The situation is pretty. Current right now, so. That's all I want to keep back.
Thank you. Why don't we feedback on this, I, I, D one to develop a homelessness strategic action plan, I just, that continues to be a priority. We continue to work with the county, thank you for changing the words at the very top of it. As they're hopefully gonna update their, theirs, it would be so great if we had the, the work of internally and externally with the community to say, this is what we're doing. Because I feel like as we continue to wait for the county. Well, we just move faster, we'll just leave it at that, so that's a priority, and then the other part, and I think it's in the communication junk, so. Um, I was, it continues to um. Uh, it continues to amaze me, the misunderstanding and the misinformation around state laws and what the city can do and what. Were mandated to do, in fact, I've seen emails this week about that, and I'm hoping that in the communication case, we have something that combats that misinformation. Because people are pretty, well, it's confusing and it's new and it's different, so is that captured another part of the document?
It's captured under the high performing government piece, but I'll also add that I was just talking with Phil on this point last week where. Uh, we're, we're actively working on a social media campaign to get to exactly what I'm talking.
Okay, just wanna make sure that's. Thank you. I've seen any other questions or comments, we will speed along to next one.
Priority area E, this is another large, um some pretty big changes from the last um. Um, you all saw this, so the first one here is, um and actually I'll just work my way down. I think the biggest addition here is a goal E three, uh which is relating to the application of measure P. And all of the associated kind of sub projects that come with that, um so we added those for uh there to talk about. Uh, the Albert Park uh Library and Community Center, but then also the work of um determining what's next for the Carnegie. Um, in addition, another large addition here um relates to um enforcement of illegal activities and nuisance businesses. Uh, and so we've now called out in goal E six, um looking at revising street food vending ordinance. Seeing regulation changes and increasing public education and enforcement efforts to curb illegal fireworks, illegal food vending, illegal massage establishments. As well as collaborating with state agencies for enforcing of illegal cannabis products. Um, and then also just looking at what enforcement mechanisms we have uh to address businesses that are not in compliance with the community. So those are the, the biggest changes uh for our area.
Thanks, Mayor.
No questions, that's great.
Councilmember Mica.
Um, no questions, I just wanted to comment, yeah, E six one, I'm very happy that we are putting it in there because there are a lot of challenges right now, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I think your preamble was that this is a very large list, I'm seeing it's very large, so I can understand um that uh. Everything we have here might not fit into three years, yeah, so I appreciate, this is going back again to the Vice Mayor's comment around. How do we establish priorities, so I'll be interested to see what the first take looks like, so it's not, nothing specific to E, but. There's a lot here.
Yeah.
So I have one question and a few comments, and I think this one is for um the fire chief, so E one three is implement an enhanced fire code compliance program. I just, I don't know, I'm sure we did discuss that, I actually don't remember what that is, I don't think, can you speak to what that is?
It's just the native code, uh we're on a new code cycle that started this year, uh once again enforcing, educating before we enforce. Uh, making sure they're uh much like zone zero, uh what's better, office is going to be our education, uh before we get the enforcement.
So how is this different than what you guys were always doing anyway, as a matter of course of business on such a high level, so I'm just, I, that I was more curious about, because we're always. Doing.
I think I can tell you the honest truth, it's that, I'm the fire chief now, so that's been my, this is my leader's intent, I'd like to put it out there, to be honest.
Thank you, Phil, that's excellent, that's, that's why I asked the question, um and I do see, I. This has gotten to be a really big priority area, but I'm thrilled that we had E three, are we gonna do it measure P, this community couldn't be more excited about having a new library. Uh, community center, so I'm glad that you pulled that out, because I think the council needs to look at those trade offs as we get farther down, and as you all know, we six and. Dealing with the illegal issues that are ongoing, so thank you for enumerating those so well. Okay.
Hey, so this is uh priority area F, high performing government, um uh added a couple. tweaks to some of these objectives here, um but I think most notably, um like an F two two, we removed uh. Great storytelling and change that the strategic communications, kind of just adjusted that. Um, as it relates to public messaging and combating misinformation, um and can providing consistent communication practices across the organization with the community. Uh, and then in addition, we have uh added down here uh an F three, F three two. Um, this is a comment that the Vice Mayor had around. A focus on sales tax, uh and so this is looking to, you know, explore strategies and initiatives and then increasing overall sales tax revenues by. Uh, attracting those generating uses, uh diversifying our sales tax base and capturing the sales tax advantage. Which is a great, great term for that, um as well as um we've bolstered F three three, and this is looking at new revenue sources. Um, for the city, so looking at how do we invest in sufficient funding to, you know, enable deferred maintenance of our infrastructure. Um, and make sure that we're also setting ourselves up for a long term sustainability, safety, reduction of flood risk and reliability of our public assets. So those are the major changes, so it's this priority.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, questions to your comments? Councilmember Hill?
Yes, I noticed um F two six, just to pull this out a little bit, and that's the revisions to our immunity code and the charter. So I see that we've tentatively put this in at year two. And only two, is that sufficient?
As it relates to timing?
Yeah.
I think whether it's two or three is gonna get kind of flushed out in the next year as we kind of plan forward. So it's probably more appropriate to say two slash three, because it's, it's a little hard to pinpoint, it has a, there's a lot of if then buts on. Elections and capacity and um that sort of thing and.
Day, that's perfect, okay.
Yeah, I think I'm more focused on that, I think it's gonna take one year to make a couple of changes.
Oh. To analyze and identify, which is that. Identify, that'll take about a year, and then to actually place on the ballot would be, yeah. Depending on which election.
Okay, so I guess.
For you on from that one, can I just add it, so would we want to see, because the city charter has to be down at the ballot box, so maybe we want to put that in this document. Because, because you have municipal code and city charter and they work together, so.
It is to your point.
The next one, F two.
Talks about putting it on the ballot.
Oh, okay. I know, but it has to be on the ballot. It actually, no changes have happened, evaluating placing it on the ballot, I, I just want to reinforce to the community that no changes are happening to our charter without a ballot issue. Yes, everyone, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, that's my reminder.
Uh, no, no, it's been nice, great, thank you.
Um, I had a question on one of the new ones, F two five. Support and explore regional partnerships to seek efficiency and service delivery, I know what the words mean, but I actually don't know what this means. I mean, I know.
Yeah, so this is added, I'm looking at, um, you know, discussions with Marinwood. Um, discussions with the San Rafael sanitation district, and also just looking at what other intergovernmental partnerships are, ways can we get? Economies to scale or greater efficiencies in the way we operate, that's what this is.
Okay, would we consider putting in something like intergovernmental relationships, because what you just said, I was imagining we're like talking to Sam Mateo about how to deliver services. Like, that was not what I read here.
In Marin County.
Yeah, well, originally, I, I, I mean, it could be joint purchasing uh programs and.
Shared services.
Shared services, yeah, all, all those types of things.
Okay.
So more nuts and bolts than conceptual transactions with.
Yes. Nuts and bolts, I didn't know, okay, I've seen any other comments on that one. Marion?
Great. Let's do our equity act that's following, but on, um, so in compliance with the law praising, um, just some of the people. Pushy, um as well as made some changes, attempted to uh make the goals and the objectives themselves be a little more action oriented. Um, and then we have also made a couple of structural changes, we condensed the ADA related objectives into G one one. Um consolidated uh two of the goals into goal. F four, so that's been moved out, um and then also uh added in G three two, which gets to a data driven approach. Using benchmarks and indicators, uh we'll be able to pay a basis to help us uh make decisions about motivation and future.
Questions and comments, Vice Mayor, I'll start with you.
Um, three point two, decision about the locations of future public improvements. Um, so we're gonna get a program to tell us this, or, I, I don't understand what, um.
It's um looking at the available databases, I know that there's um. A variety of them either at the state or as well as the law at the federal level um from time being, um but it's just um. Ensuring that we're utilizing those when we're developing the CIP or we're having these conversations with the council, so we're coming with more data than we presently are.
Lots of data in the CIP, um.
I think part of this is when we're looking at citywide investments, is making sure that we're being really deliberate. And our focus to look back at investments in, in the past and as we're moving forward. How, like, I, I think about canal lighting, right, when that project came about, it was because the city's infrastructure was inadequate. And the canal, not so much in other areas, um so we're trying to kind of. Make sure that we're keeping those in mind as we're evaluating. The work plans and where we pay then, all that, that sort of thing, so that we don't create future inequities.
So using other available data sources to um. Accelerate our even handedness.
Fair, yeah, it's a data analysis exercise.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Hill?
Um, you know, all my feedback was incorporated from last time, so I have no.
Thank you, mine too, thank you. I just had one comment question on this, um given our political climate, which we will. Continue to evolve in ways that we probably can't even imagine sitting here right now, when I read G three and the first two sentences are integrate equity. I believe in that approach and that represents our community values, and I know that we have a DEIB committee here who's really, really weighed in on that. Having said that, I actually, we all live in the real world, and I would suggest that we change that heading. To something you, we're ensuring that all the planning efforts are inclusive, community informed, something, something, something. Versus integrate equity, um we're gonna keep doing the good work here and we're gonna be. Pognisant of the world, or the, the situation that we find ourselves in, and to me, just, this is like, let's just put a big target on our back, so. He should be real.
So we also have it on in the priority area here, in the first four, equity. Um, is that, do you think that would be a target for us?
I don't know, I was so looking at the integrate equity, which is an action item, and that's a really good, that's a really good comment, so I will leave it to staff, but I do. I do worry that with specification of AI today, that I wouldn't. Be surprised if federal government is gonna be trolling every single plan throughout the United States for certain reasons.
As a mayor, Kim, I follow on to that, is you know, we have an entire section of our general plan, as that was, so I'm pretty sure we're gonna. I don't think it's a matter of if, but when, we're gonna have to confront that and what, we're gonna have to probably make a bigger decision.
Okay.
I do, oh, sorry. There's a similar related. Oh, but um comment that is, we use the word so much, we use it to define itself, um and so it's. I, I know that we're saying that much, um using the word equity, and it might be better to look for more just descriptive words. That actually fit, um rather than, you know, saying that we have an equity act that says a belonging opportunity for all, and then what we started to create equitable outcomes and just like. Um, we're equitably going to seek equitable outcomes for the e- equity and the, you know, it's, um, so.
No, your points will take, I mean, that's why I saw the integrate equity, it goes to exactly what you're saying, when we integrate it, so let's just define that, and yeah. That's what I'm hoping, I hope we don't live in that world to describe, but hopefully we shall see, okay, yeah, any other comments on this?
And, and it's, yeah, just to comment on that too, it's just, it's hard to describe, like, I cannot think of another word. Instead of equity, it's a very specific term describing what it is, so it's kind of.
Kind of your source, you know, even handed.
A very short one, um it strikes me uh as a prophylactic measure, like a terrible staff about this, but the. City, I think, could reasonably um adopt a resolution that said all of its uses of the word equity are intended uh to. Um, mean fairness.
Something.
Something like that.
Okay.
So that's, it's true, I think their problem today is the idea of equity is suggested to be something that's not fairness, it is unfairness. But we always mean equity to mean fairness.
Good, I'm gonna keep going, so, um, because I just want to make sure that we have, we have time for public comment, but first I want to go to the council one more time. So as you look at the document in total, having, I know it seems like we raised through it, but we did have a long study session, you have this document. Received information from the community since then, so Vice Mayor, other than your very insightful comments about prioritization across the document. Is there anything else that you would want to say that on the document?
Well, I just, it's, it's an amazing document, uh, this is a, um, it's completely detailed, it will explain for all of the things that we're trying to do. Um, and I can't wait to be able to hand it out to constituency here, you know, this is what we're doing. Um, so, and it's certainly a, um, a guide for some of the less sophisticated governments in our neighborhoods.
I'm going with that. I think my brother's saying, uh, Senator Hill, yeah.
I think I am looking, this is a great, I think, expression of the time that staff has put into this, making it uh easy, and I use that word, uh, maybe not uh fully, it's what it means, but I'm looking forward to our next section, session, which should be, I think, uh, I hope, um, a session where we're doing puts and takes when staff has taken a first turn of the crank on what could plausibly fit, uh, then.
For the next fiscal year.
Yeah, for the next, sorry, yeah, the next fiscal year, just to see, you know, how things um fall above or below, uh, because then we might have we might have something to say, like, well, could you pull this in, um, and, you know, like, the answer might be no, but I'm looking forward to that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And can I just, yeah, please, a comment on that, um, so they liked to say this at the beginning, but in terms of that next phase from a timing perspective, is um, you know, once the council adopts this kind of phase one goals and objectives, then we'll go back, the staff develop those work plans over the summer, and then the plan is to come back to the council with those, uh, in either late August or in September, so we'll have that discussion then.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, there are just um emerging priorities as we speak that are in competition for things that are on this document already, so it is gonna be a constant iterative reevaluating on priorities conversation, that's part of why we'll be coming to the council and, you know, with, with public updates um for the community and for the council on how are those priorities are shifting in real time. One of the things that I think is important to note, um, and to your point, Councilmember Bushy having a tool like this to be able to kind of inform and educate the community about all the things we're doing, the others, the other thing that's um important to uh elevate is all the work that's not in this document, um, which is a huge amount of core services and the day-to-day operations of like running the city, like we want housing built, and the planning department, I'm looking at Micah, has to review tons of technical documents and follow all these housing laws, that's a humongous body of work, right? That is inherent in what we're doing, but I think we are still working on how do we make that transparent? And because some of the trade-offs might not be one of these, it might be, we're gonna do code enforcement on illegal food vending, we're gonna have to reduce code enforcement in another area for a period of time, because we can't do both, and so that's gonna be the, I think, the challenge going forward is to articulate the entirety of the scope of work that the city is under.
Thank you, Councilmember Micah, your comments.
Yes, no, huge appreciation, this is really hard to compile, I think just the vision is a lot, so I cannot even imagine the implementation, and then once we start looking at timelines and budgets, uh, how we are going to be prioritizing, you know, is uh very complicated, um, so, so really, thank you, um. And I continue with the equity component, uh, that I believe is very important, and I just want to mention equity, to me, is not fairness, is more than that, so how do we, as, it's a big conversation, but I just wanted to mention that, um, that we, we just have to either leave it there or find something that it could be a replacement, but I cannot think of anything, so I just wanted to mention that, it's, it's a very important part to me, it's a lens of everything we do in the city, very important.
Yeah, you know, let's just add, um, this is a new approach that the city, we have continued to evolve, how we've done goals and objectives, Vice Mayor, and I can remember it's done very, very differently as recently as seven years ago, right, so, um, I'd kudos to the staff for recognizing the importance of taking the input from our community, from the council, putting goals and objectives at a high level, these are purposely not granular, because part of what we're trying to do is say, this is what we're trying to change in our community, i.e. what is the problem we're trying to solve versus leading with solutions? Because we have the experts in the room, and we have a lot of people that help develop those solutions, so thank you to all the department heads and all the staff that's sitting in here, and I.
Do you mind if I just double down?
Oh, yeah. Okay, and, and, because I see our finance director reminds you also for being in the room, because we're tying this together, I want to be very clear, that we're doing something new here, and so I'll recognize that we all want to do it perfectly, but there is not perfection, so if there are hiccups in evolution, we'll continue to embrace that, but this is a really, this is such a big step, this is in terms of good governance, this is so different from the way that we've done things, I just want to take a moment to say that before I open a public comment, but.
See, I just wanted to appreciate all the, the staff in the room too, who are working on this, the directors and their teams, it's been a real heavy lift to get to this point and it feels really good to have it to move forward, and I was gonna say the very same thing about resources and budget. Some of the priorities will shift if resources dry up that we don't expect, so that's another big unknown, we're seeing um, you know, at the federal level, the schools just lost fourteen million dollars in mental health um services, and um so all of these impacts, you know, we are seeing nonprofit partners having to lay staff off, that's gonna impact our community, so as those, even if they're not direct hits, hits to the city budget, although there will be some of those, we will have to reevaluate, and we'll have to have a your one plan and say, guess what, this funding got pulled, whatever it is, and we're gonna have to um adjust.
Thank you, um, so I'm gonna open a public comment, I'm gonna keep a little timer that probably won't be able to hear the da-da-da-da-da, but I will say it, that your time is up in two minutes, um, and if you'd like to speak, you are welcome, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in, Phil, go ahead.
Um, yeah, uh, well, so San Rosso submitted a letter, we hadn't quite thought up with all the numbers, so.
No worries.
Correct numbers, um, so for that alignment, basically, we really enforced the sustainability elements, particularly the three of them. That it is eighty-five percent reduction of emissions, it's the EV strategy, the building life preparation goes now uh and the implementation of third, so, uh, they build thirteen um, A three. And of course, our trees, so that gives us eighty-five percent balance, the other fifteen percent to get to net zero, which is also a, a Marin goal uh requires sequestration of carbon, trees are the best way that San Rafael has, or at least one of the best ways of doing that. So, um, to further that, and I think to uh maintain some focus on this very important part of the not just sequestration, but the beauty of the city. Um, we're suggesting adding some language, uh, what we would now propose to be B three four, an additional uh item there which is basically finished revision of the city's tree ordinance um in accordance with general plan twenty forty uh and initiate work on the general plan program, the tree master plan. And, you know, their memories may be short here, the tree ordinance has been under revision for a decade or more, and um so it's long overdue. Though, we were told two years ago that the completion of the LiDAR uh inventory of assets would then trigger, what, we would come aside until then, and then when we pick it up um, a group of us had put in, you know, well over a year's worth, worth of work past then to improve it, and uh we think it's ready to go, or close to ready to go, once that new information is incorporated, so let's move forward on that.
Thank you, and all the staff respond after public comment about uh the inclusion of specific ordinances in this document. Um, yeah, go ahead, Amy.
Hello, Amy Lakeover, Bristol Park, I'm here to um also underscore Bill's point, uh, the work that's been put into researching um sound policy for um Tree City USA, which is, we're one of them uh has already been put in, the ordinance has been written, although that's policy, it's something that, that stands there and the time has has really gone by quickly, and as he mentioned, um uh we were told that once the uh LiDAR uh inventory was done, that that would be the next step, and so, although I didn't have the current um document that you folks have in front of you now, when I wrote this letter, um, I went through it very carefully, and, and the word tree is used once in these seven goals uh for Tree City USA, so I'm just gonna say, shame on you, Tree City USA, it's not in here once, and you know you have work to do. Um, and uh this isn't even assets, this is policy, it's bringing us up to date with other forward-thinking cities and actually consider that to be part of their aesthetic and environmental uh solution to quality of life. And you look every single goal you have, aside from the homeless, and even that could be linked to having sound, sane tree policy. I really think that's something you should have.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. That is a problem when I'm in my own country.
Okay, um, my name's Victoria Dewitt, I live on Fremont Road in the western neighborhood, and I'm commenting on the B one dot four designing and structure second street and fourth street intersection. I am opposed to the closure of the westbound left turn lane from second to Mark Ward and Western Avenue for safety and access reasons. Currently, there's over three hundred vehicles that use this left turn lane, and now the most recent plan is to divert those three hundred vehicles from one intersection out to five other intersections without the capacity for the increased traffic load and without any road or safety improvements for the other intersections, because they're outside the project boundaries for the grant. The other thing that I think is very dangerous about the current plan is the quasi-closing of Mark Ward at Second Street to only allow certain vehicles to cross and other vehicles not to cross. So the plan, the current plan is, or proposed plan is to allow well, they have to allow emergency vehicles up Mark Ward, because they can't get up there any other way, and so they want to put some kind of little curb and signage, they can't block it, because you'll delay the emergency access. And so other vehicles are gonna use it, there's no question, currently, there's a sign at the end of West End Avenue that says no vehicle access to Second Street from Western Avenue. So what do vehicles do? They drive down Western Avenue to access Second Street, and then at the end of West End at Mark Ward, right before Second Street, there's a sign that says right turn only, so what do vehicles do? They go straight and access Second Street, they completely ignore the signage, and that's what's gonna happen at Mark Ward and it's gonna create a very dangerous situation, because now we no longer have a signal to control that movement and you're gonna have vehicles crossing there that aren't supposed to cross there, but they're gonna cross there, because it's the best way to access that neighborhood.
Thank you, can you wrap up?
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, we received your letters as well, and, thank you. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Oh, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Yovar Meedi, and I'm here representing the Raisas del Canal, which translates to roots of the canal. We're a community-based organization in the canal and in San Rafael, and we're nurturing the next generation of environmental leaders through our youth programs. And so it's great to hear about this focus on these topics, and I just want to say that we're on the ground doing this work, we're building urban gardens, outdoor classrooms, and really trying to be hands-on with our work in the canal, we canvass the community, and it is a big topic for people, and people are really keen on seeing these changes in the canal district. Um, and so I won't uh go through my whole script, I know you guys are on a tight little time schedule right now, so I just want to say that we're on the ground, and we support all the efforts of the city and the city council on these topics and Raisas del Canal is eager to support and help and be involved.
Thank you, your comments. And it wasn't highlighted that in one of them, it varies, A three five is very specific to East San Rafael, but actually, that's to them.
And I look forward to seeing the completed version, thank you.
Thank you. Other than the room, I haven't spoken.
I just have a brief, um, really breso, uh, based on Victoria's comment, which is that I just feel that the, uh, I on the second street intersection that's being, you know, currently designed and reapproaching some redesign. Um, I very much am uncomfortable with being stranded in the center of the intersection currently on uh Second Street, and I feel that to uh increase efficiency along Second Street to provide a median for pedestrians and bicyclists to be caught at uh intentionally to allow faster and easier flow of traffic is very much a lateral improvement to this intersection. And, um, and, you know, I have small children that I, when they become of age, they're venturing out on their own, I would very much hope they do not find themselves in a situation where they're caught in the middle of Second Street uh with fast traffic on either side of them.
That's all, thanks. Thank you, thank you for that comment. Thank you all, um, see what time it was, okay, we did, we did well as a group, and as always, I, I want to just underscore what the city manager said that this continuing to have other priorities that surface, so this is the ongoing conversation, I don't want anyone to leave the room thinking that this is set in stone, that's not the way we roll here, we meet at the moment, um, but this is a great uh direction, so with that, um, oh, actually, you know what, before I adjourn, um, there were, did staff, could staff respond to any of the comments that was given, I apologize. So there were just comments that I would.
I think, um, yes. Given the process here, and what we're trying to do with keeping these goals and objectives at this policy level for the council, I, I, we hear the feedback about the pre-ordinants are very specific initiatives are being priorities to the community. That's the work, that's kind of the next step, is this, this gets adopted um in, in a public regular session, and then we take from here and then cascade, what are the fiscal year you know, um, July one through June thirty? Specific projects are going to be, and the reason we can't say right here in this moment, like, not just say yes is, I would be remiss, because that process hasn't happened yet, we really have to look at the trade-offs and the timing and priorities, and there are regulatory compliance things, there are projects in process that have grant deadlines that, um the departments, and this is in another interdepartmental project, it requires a lot of cross-departmental collaboration, and so we just need that time to do that prioritization exercise and bring, and that will all be uh a, a public conversation.
Thank you, and then we had comments um around second and fourth and Mark Ron, which we did have a, an agenda item, was it just last one, I'm quitting, so we went deeply, but maybe we could just quickly talk about the timing of that again, for those that might not remember where I myself or Vice Mayor was in, when we had that conversation about when that comes.
This is the council construction award in the fall.
Okay.
Hard to say.
Okay. Thank you. With that, um, we are going to adjourn this meeting, and we'll head into closed session, so thank you all. Great.